So I'm hoping you took the opportunity to write down some questions for our city council candidates. We're very pleased to have representatives from three different wards. So from Ward 1, we have Michael Quinlan. We have Andrew Smith. Running from Ward 5, we have Alex Jarrett and David Murphy. And Ward 7, Penny Geis and Rachel Maori. So you'll see this part of the evening is structured very similarly to last part. Thank you in the back row for piping me up. So we'll be rotating between the candidates kind of by their wards. So each ward candidate will have the opportunity to answer the same question. And we'll be rotating between questions from the audience and questions from our Gazette reporter. So we will be starting with two-minute opening statements. And the candidates pulled flyers so to determine the order. So we're going to start with opening statements from Ward 1. And Michael will start us off with two minutes of opening statements, and then Andrew.
All right, batting lead off. Well, thank you very much. It's an honor to be here. I'm thrilled to have the opportunity to field your questions and talk about Northampton, which I love. My family moved to Northampton in 1976 when my father was hired to teach at Smith Vocational. It really changed the trajectory of my parents' life for my dad to get into the Union. They had always been renters, and then finally were able to buy a home. And luckily, we came to school here in Northampton, my brother and I. And it's built this really deep-seated love with this community for me. My wife is also from Northampton and feels so strongly about her growing up here as well. This has really been a wonderful community to be a part of for so long. You know, if you look at the seal of the city of Northampton, it has three words on it in Latin. And when you translate them to English, they mean caring, education, and justice. And if you think about that, it's pretty remarkable because that seal was created many, many moons ago, right? But the city still stands for those things so strongly. Caring is something that we do here, right? We care about national, international issues as well as what's going on in our neighborhood. We also have a very strong feeling here about our education system, which is top-notch, one of the best in the state, and we know the state is one of the best in the country. So we can feel a lot of pride around that. And then finally, Northampton's always been a place that wants to treat people equally and justly. And I feel that, you know, these qualities in the city are things that I aspire to in my life, and they're the reasons that I'm running for city council. So as I, you know, have been walking the streets of Northampton, knocking on doors, meeting people, I find that more often than not, as people tell me what their concerns are, it falls into one of those three things, right? Whether it's climate change, whether it's how the city is doing employing people, and finally, how the education system is going. That's been, you know, everything kind of falls into those three. And I look forward to discussing those further tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Andrew, would you like to present your opening statements?
Assuming this thing's not creepy. Okay, so my name is Andrew Smith. First, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on. I thank everybody for coming here. I think it really speaks highly to the civic-mindedness of our community and for the people who care about it, that you're willing to spend some time on this Tuesday night and come and listen to people talk about how you feel, how they feel they can make the community better. I wasn't born here. I grew up in Nashville, Tennessee, and Winston-Salem, North Carolina. I was born in a little coal-mining town for real in West Virginia. And I used to go home and I used to see sort of environmental waste, you know? And that was like my first experience with growing up. And I went to grad school at UMass. I ended up falling in love with this area. It reminded me of the best parts of North Carolina without any of the sort of crazy politics on the... And I think what really kind of, you know, we bought our house here in 2011, my wife and I. And, you know, what really matters most to me is the way people have decided to care about themselves, their neighbors, and their broader world that they live in. And I think what I've been knocking on doors, one of the things that I've really kind of honed in on the more than anything else is that people want community. And I think that's the thing that people really care the most about. And I think that's why I want to get involved because I feel like we are at a pivotal moment in time where we have this sort of like innate tendency to care for one another that's been broken. Not necessarily by anything anybody here has done, but I feel like as many opportunities as I can just to talk about the fact that we're all in this together is really the best thing I can do. So I've chosen to make that my opening statement for the evening.
All right. Thank you to our Ward 1 candidates. Next, we'll hear from Ward 5, starting with David and then Alex.
Thank you. I'm going to start off with my mission statement. Being a city councillor is not a soapbox for your personal political views. Being a councillor is competently overseeing the operation of a $116 million municipality that provides vital services to city residents and taxpayers. Services like police, fire, and emergency medical care, water, sewer, streets, streetlights, education, and parking. From the Building Department to the Board of Health, the city of Northampton touches almost everyone's life on a daily basis. You deserve a councillor with 14 years' experience who can bring the knowledge and experience necessary to do the job right. That's why I decided to run for reelection. My experience goes back 40 years, when Dave Muzany, right out of college, put me on the committee that brought cable television to Northampton. Mary Ford put me on the Housing Partnership and on the Elm Street Architectural Commission. I served on the Downtown Architectural Commission, spent two terms on the Board of Assessors where I learned a lot about municipal finance. Again, for all of life's endeavors, what you bring to the table is your knowledge and your experience. When you hire someone for a job, you want to know what their knowledge and experience is. When you select someone for an elected position, you should look into their knowledge and experience. For the 14 years I've been on the council, I've served on the Finance Committee. Eight years as chairman. I'm the only councillor to ever chair the Finance Committee after the charter change. We're going into an override. It's going to be very challenging for the fiscal 2021 budget. I'd ask you to take advantage of my knowledge and experience and keep me on the city council. I ask for your support. Thank you.
Alex.
Well, I'm really glad to be here. Thank you all for coming. I'm running because I believe we need innovative leadership and out-of-the-box thinking to deal with the challenges that we're facing, especially those posed by climate change and increasing wealth inequality. My time, so I'm 44 years old. I've been in Northampton for 21 years, and 14 of those in Ward 5 in Florence Center. For 17 years, I've been the co-founder and the treasurer of the Pedal People Cooperative. Through that, I've learned accounting and budgeting, audits, taxes, all the aspects of running a small business. Also personally and as a business, very resourceful and thrifty and conservative in expenses. And I think that would be a useful skill to bring to city government. I also have extensive experience in facilitation and finding a common ground. It's a democratic business, and each year, I'm reelected by my fellow workers. I love meeting people. It's one of the reasons I decided to run. And so I've knocked on 88% of the doors. I keep very careful track. That's almost 1,500 doors. And I've met hundreds of people. And to each of them, I ask them, you know, what issues are important to you? My campaign is centered on being responsive, engaged in the community, and inclusive. So that means reaching out to people who haven't felt listened to by the city and who are underrepresented. And I'm committed to continuing that work if elected. We talk about climate change. We talk about affordability. I'm currently on the Northampton Housing Partnership. Development, transportation, schools, business development, worker rights. I have lots of ideas, but I do not have all the answers. But I feel the real work in representing you is listening and collaborating and finding common ground to move forward.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for Ward 5. Next, we have Ward 7. And Penny, you'll be the first.
First, I want to make sure I'm the right distance from this. When I was back there, it was sometimes hard to hear people. Can people in the back hear me clearly? Yes, thank you. So I'm running because I have grandchildren who go to school here. And I care about their future. I care about the future of their friends. Kids walk through my yard to go to school every day. So I care about the whole neighborhood of schools and the representatives of your kids, your grandkids. And climate change is the biggest issue facing them. It's our responsibility to do something about it. We can do many things at the local level. It's easier to do things here than it is to do national things. We can, our job is the infrastructure. Roads and bridges, schools, police department, all of those infrastructure things can be geared to provide us environmental advantages. If we buy our electricity collaboratively and use that profit to build green energy here, that is something we can do to make a difference for our future. We reduce the carbon that we admit into the atmosphere, and we also protect our own energy when things go wrong in the future. Along with that, if we put in fiber optic to everybody's home, not only do we get the fun aspect of faster, cheaper internet, we can have smart meters in the homes and give people a financial incentive to reduce their carbon footprint when power is the most polluting and expensive. We can turn off those, we can refuse to turn on those coal-powered plants with smart meters. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel.
Yeah. Well, thank you as well to the organizers, to the League of Women Voters, to the other candidates, and to all of you for showing up on a cold and rainy night. Thank you. You know, I've loved this city ever since I first lived here as an undergraduate next to Joe's Pizza. And I have the pleasure now of raising my kids here. And I really want to plan a vibrant future for Northampton. I imagine a city where seniors can walk and kids can bike because our streets and sidewalks are safe and accessible. I imagine a city that is both mitigating and preparing for climate change. A place where young people can choose to settle because it's diverse and vibrant and affordable. A place where residents of all walks of life feel included and engaged in our local government. You know, local matters now more than ever as frustration grows at the national levels. I personally feel agency here. I believe Northampton can serve as a model for other municipalities for those changes that we'd like to see at the larger levels. I would be thrilled to be a part of making that happen. It was as a community health director that I first learned how to think at the community level with all of its multi-dimensional moving parts. As a regional organizer for Jobs with Justice, as the director of the Pioneer Valley Women's March, I now have a history of effective advocacy on the local and state level. I've worked with a wide range of people, and I have the ability to listen deeply. I see the city council role as one as a conduit for residents. I have talked to hundreds of people on doors. I've learned so much. And I just want to end by encouraging anyone to reach out to me if you have any ideas or questions or concerns. I'd love to hear them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you to you all. We're now going to start with some of our audience questions. So first, it'll be directed at Ward 1. Andrew, you'll be taking it first, and then followed by Michael.
Ward 1, right?
Yes.
The section of Hatfield Street between Bridge Road and North King Street is a pedestrian danger zone. We cannot walk to the grocery store or department store without taking our lives in our hands. We have had two public meetings with the city in the past 20 years. Nothing has changed. We need traffic calming mechanisms and crosswalks. What will you do that no one else has done?
That's a very specific question. So I can only talk about my own experience. So I live on a downtown busy cut-through, and this was kind of like my first local decision to get involved in local politics. And so I went around, I knocked on my neighbor's doors, we got the petition, we, you know, wrote a letter saying that we'd like to have some changes done to our street. And then the public hearing didn't even, they didn't even tell us there was going to be a public hearing. And we got a letter in the mail saying that they couldn't do it because there's going to be some improvements on State Street. And I was like really dispirited because I felt like, you know what? That doesn't work for me. So I decided to become more involved and create feedback loops that allow people to actually become involved in decision-making processes. So I think the important thing is let people know when there are going to be meetings, let people know when hearings are going to take place, and then actually follow up with actionable items. I think we had an engineer come out and they did a survey of my particular street, and they said car velocities were adequate, even though it's like a 400-foot-long street and they're hitting 40 miles an hour in like a 400-foot-long stretch. So I think actually listening to people and following up is a real important step.
Thank you. Michael?
This is a topic that has come up at a number of doors. And the other night, spoke with some residents at Lathrop Community. And at Lathrop, of course, there's a crosswalk in front of there, and a lot of the residents feel unsafe crossing there because that's a straightaway. I live on that straightaway as well. And it is a place where people do speed. On Hatfield Street, they also do drive very fast, and it needs to be addressed. One thing that I would point to is on Prospect Street by the synagogue now and at the bottom of the hill, we've put in the orange flags that people can wave when they're crossing. I think that we should look into that. The other thing we have is we have the flashing lights at Northampton High School where a student or anyone that's crossing there hits the button and the bright lights flash in hopes that the cars would stop. And, you know, I would think that that would be something that could be addressed on Bridge Road, on Hatfield Street, and in many other places where there are straightaways where speeding is quite honestly out of control.
Thank you. Next question will come from Greta from Gazette. And it'll be directed at Alex first, and then David.
So Northampton's goal is to be carbon neutral by 2050. So I'm wondering what you think the city can do to reach that goal, and also if you think 2050 is soon enough.
So buildings are the biggest factor in our city that are contributing to climate change, according to our carbon output. So as much as we can do in terms of on a municipal level to have, say, the net-zero energy buildings and new construction, continue with efficiency models there, consider a shared electric car fleet as we're replacing the municipal vehicles. I love the idea of having someone in every department who's thinking about the issue of carbon in that department, not just the dollars, but also how much carbon that we're using. I think we should talk about public transit in terms of its ability to have, you know, both preserve our roads, reduce congestion, but also contribute to climate change, you know, improving our carbon output.
Thank you. David?
And the same question, what can we do? We've actually been at it for a long time. We became a green community in 2010. In 2014, Councilor Barge and I were on the Northampton Clean Energy Working Group that came up with an energy roadmap, 48-page report that we have still been working off of. Capital improvements, just about a week ago, the mayor made a request of us to, over two years, go back and study every municipal building. It's a two-year project. Study every municipal building to see what we can do to increase its efficiency and reduce its carbon footprint. The other thing that's in that capital plan is two solar canopies, one over a reconfigured roundhouse lot and another one at the fire station, the main fire station over that lot. And the one over the roundhouse would feed into the grid, but the one at the fire station would actually go into a battery backup system to provide emergency power for the fire station. So they're actually viable things on the table for 2021 already.
Great. Thank you. Our next question will come from the audience, and it'll be for our Ward 7 candidates. Penny, you'll answer it first, and then Rachel.
In Northampton, gentification has taken a stronghold. Seniors suffer due to widening income gaps. What are the five priorities you think will help disenfranchise seniors in this city? What role can the council play in accurately representing us and helping resolve our concerns?
One of the things that is possible to us legally to help seniors stay in their homes when it's hard for them to pay their taxes is to allow them to not pay their, this isn't the state law, we have not adopted it here, to allow seniors to not, of a certain age and income cap, to not pay their taxes. That becomes a lien on their property that is paid when the property is sold or when they die, whichever comes first. So it has a financial impact, but over time, it allows seniors to stay in their homes. It's an important part of our community.
Thank you. Rachel?
That's not five things.
That's a lot.
Yes. Our senior population is actually kind of set to explode in the next 20 years with our baby boomers. And yet, we have young folks. That demographic is dwindling. So we really need to prepare now for the needs of, you know, food security, transportation, accessibility for seniors, and aging in place. And I think it's a lot about, and the great thing about addressing affordable housing is that it addresses more than one issue because you're also going to usher in a younger demographic if you have affordable, more affordable housing choices and housing stock. And that involves kind of being creative and having flexible zoning laws, making the permit process not a nightmare. And I think the other things are, we have a great senior center. I love neighbor-to-neighbor. I'd love to expand that to help each other. And we all win when we help each other. And also have kind of village models. And Employment After Retirement Earn is a great program, and I'd love to expand that too.
Just under the wire. Okay, we have another question from the audience. They'll be directed at Ward 1. So Michael, you'll answer first, and then Andrew.
Okay.
Are you ready with one?
There's so many good ones here, it's hard to pick.
It's hard to choose, yes.
There are an alarming number of vacant storefronts, both in Northampton and Florence. And in both places, there are landlords resistant to renting. What is your opinion on this issue, and what would be your first step to address this?
This has become the hottest topic at doors, I think. You know, the most common thing that comes up is, what are we going to do about the empty storefronts? You know, truthfully, a city council is somewhat limited, right, in what they can do. That said, as a person that works in private business myself, you know, recognizing that business models that work are important to create opportunity for people to employ our citizens, for people to pay their rent, and also to make a buck is very important. And so as I look at downtown Northampton, I think, you know, you have to create a standard for those landlords to, at the very least, put an effort in. Because it seems that there's at least a couple that most of us feel do not put an effort in. And I think we need to create some sort of system where we can at least see an effort. You know, vacancy tax, things like that are out. It's not legal. That said, we can apply some pressure and through creativity and judgment, you know, really, really push for people to get into those businesses.
Thank you. Andrew?
So this is a wonderful question, and it's something that gets to the heart of what I've heard at the doors as well. I think one of my pet issues, and if you look at my signs, you'll see there's a little food truck on there. I think part of the problem is that we have a development strategy that is tailored to exactly one thing, like a retail storefront experience. And the retail storefront experience, as everybody knows, is being hammered away by large internet retailers. And so I think creating opportunities for microenterprises would be really important. Removing restrictions on where food trucks can operate, the fact that Central Business District and downtown Florence have restrictions on where food trucks can operate would allow people who don't have a lot of capital to start up a business. And I think it's important to let people try to succeed here. We also need to create opportunities for microenterprises. We need to work on a partnership where people can go in and they can start a business without renting out an entire storefront. And we need to recognize the fact that there are young people who have mountains of student loans who are not going to start a business unless they can have some sort of different creative way of opening and entering a space rather than just like a two-year lease that costs $200,000. It's just not going to happen.
Thank you. Our next question will come from the Gazette, and it'll be for Ward 5 candidates. David, you'll answer it first.
What is your stance on a possible smoking ban downtown?
I don't, I've never smoked cigarettes, so I'm not a cigarette smoker. That said, the real concern is the logistics of enforcing it. It's going to be very, very difficult to enforce, and it is going to affect the street population. I don't know, I've never polled how many of those folks smoke. But I think the biggest issue with it is going to be enforcing it and making it consistent if the Board of Health decides to go in that direction. And now we have the question of smoking what? You know, you're going to stop the cigarette smokers? The marijuana smokers are not supposed to be downtown, but you can't walk through Pulaski Park without realizing there are people in there smoking most of the time. So twofold. How do you enforce it? Who enforces it? I don't think the police are looking to enforce it. The Board of Health can't. And how do you enforce what they smoke and where? We're not even really enforcing marijuana now. So it's a really slippery slope as to how to effectively apply it.
Thank you. Alex?
Yeah, so there's, it's a question that I think about from a bunch of different angles. You know, I hear from people around the issue of how it's really hard on their lungs when they have to walk through clouds of smoke downtown. And then also, there's the issue of if we, depending on how we would choose to enforce it, would certain populations be targeted in unfair ways simply because of that, you know, because they're smoking, then, you know, would it be used as an excuse to target certain populations? I think we have to have more of a community conversation about it. And it is, I believe, ultimately the Board of Health that makes that decision. So it's, I feel mixed on it, I guess. And I also think we should look at meeting the needs of people who are houseless and in terms of making programs to help with smoking cessation and such more readily available.
Thank you. Our next question will be for our Ward 7 candidates from the Gazette, and Penny, you'll answer it first, followed by Rachel.
How do you think Northampton has done on addressing homelessness, and what do you think the city can do further to address the issue?
I took a ride early this campaign season, was that a year ago, with the police and asked them, I wanted to see what they saw with homeless on the streets and what the problems were. And so the first thing I want to say is that we are so fortunate in our police department. They believe, they act as if they are social workers trying to help people with not die, help be sure that people get the treatment they need, that people can trust them so that when they're ready to get clean, they can come to them. And the biggest problem is finding shelter. Food is easy to get here, but shelter. I've been on the Emergency Food and Shelter Committee for 20 years, and we are, for the first year, not getting any money from the federal government to distribute.
Thank you. Rachel?
Yeah, so houselessness is one of the issues for some of these folks, among other issues. So when we look at this, we really have to look at it in a comprehensive way. I think there's some great things that the city is doing. I think we have some services. I'd like to bolster them. I think we have a kind of a compassionate citizenry here and residents here. And I think that goes a long way to finding more innovative ways to address this issue. We all know it's a national issue as well. But what I would like to see is more permanent housing. I'm glad that there's shelters. I'm glad there's halfway houses. We need to get creative about providing permanent housing for these folks and within the city and working with neighboring cities and helping them and working together to provide permanent housing for those who don't have homes.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next question will come from the Gazette for our Ward 1 candidates, and Andrew, you'll answer it first.
How do you think the city council can get input from people that it might not be hearing from, and make the meetings maybe more accessible?
Well, I think that's an issue that other people have really spearheaded. I know, I think, Council at Large, Gina Louise, she had a, a letter that went out to the, the public. There was, Rachel has been spiriting this issue of having childcare available at city meetings. And I think what you do is you change the circumstances that allow voices to get in the room. The fact, you know, I've got three kids, and the fact that I have to choose between arranging childcare, going to a meeting, that makes it challenging for people to arrive at meetings. So I think what you, you need to do is you need to sort of broaden, broaden the opportunity for people to show up. I don't think there's a technical solution, I think there's a resource solution. And the resource solution is allocating resources to make it possible for people to come.
Thank you. Michael?
You know, as, as I look at the, at the city, you know, and you look at the municipal government, and how it's made up, you know, you have a mayor, city council, school committee, and then you have a number of committees. One of the things that, that if you study it pretty closely, you'll understand Northampton's 90% Caucasian, but our committees and our government are not made up of 10% not Caucasian. This is something where, most of the committees, and I'm a member of one myself, I'm a member of the Whiting Street Fund Committee, but one of the things that I look at with these is, we need to figure out a way to, the mayor appoints people to these committees, we need to, to hold his feet to the fire a little bit on this, getting people involved, reaching out to, to the communities that are underrepresented, and getting them on committees, encouraging them to run for seats like this. Even this, even the city council this time around, no matter the results of this election, will be five men and four women. But Northampton really should be represented by five women and four men, by, based on population, right? So, you know, I think you really have to look at that and encourage people to, to run for office, to get involved, and, and that would be one way to do it, would be to start with the committees.
Thank you. Ward 1 candidates. Next, we'll have an audience question for Ward 5, and Alex, you'll answer first.
I have two of these, so I need to ask this. What is your position on the application of pesticides, roundup, on the high school athletic field for the sole purpose of being green in color?
I recently attended the pesticide reduction forum, was that just yesterday? Yes. And so I saw so many different perspectives presented there, and so, I would love to see, and it really seems like in that particular issue, it would really work to transition to an organic method. We heard from a lot of people who are land care professionals, and talked about how, over time, it's actually cheaper, once you have an initial cost, you can transition to an organic method. And it's so important that everyone that plays on those fields, and all of the people in the neighborhood who walk across them are safe. And so, reducing pesticide use in whatever way we can is important, and that we, we do that based on science, and we do that based on the precautionary principle, which, you know, states that if something is shown to produce, to cause harm, that we do more research before we use, you know, implement that.
Thank you. David?
Well, I've, I actually do quite a bit of property management. One of the things I've managed for 20 years is Child's Park in Northampton. I'm the president of the Child's Park Foundation. And we seem to have managed to run that place with very minimal pesticide use. And we have lots of lawns that, last I knew, were really pretty green, without putting chemicals on them. And in the gardens, we, we pretty much try and use organic-based everything's in the gardens, to keep the gardens okay. So, I really, I really don't understand, it, it probably is done to save time, but it really doesn't save people, and it really isn't necessary. There's all kinds of organic things you can use if you choose to use them that will get the job done the same way. I'm assuming it might be a result of the expense of those products, that people choose to use them, or to save time, but I, I don't support that, and in the property that I manage, I don't use them. So, I would not be in favor of it.
Great. Thank you. Gene, do you have another question from the audience for our Ward 7 candidates, that Rachel will answer first?
How should the city of Northampton achieve public safety without police aggression and brutality?
Well, you know, Northampton has a very low crime rate to begin with, so we're off to a good start. I think we have a particularly engaged kind of community that has a lot of shared values, and I think we do a good job expressing those, often without kind of any police presence. So, I think the way we can go about it is really engaging the community on this. I see great models, I'm, I'm all for using models in cities that are having successes, and not reinventing the wheels. And there's lots of good models of cities using community boards and citizen police boards to come up with solutions, so that the, the police aren't doing the work, that the police don't need to, and that we have social workers and other services in place that can really address a lot of this without the, the police coming in.
Thank you. Penny?
I talked about this a bit earlier. I think we are fortunate to have a well-trained police force who do not use excessive violence. The officer I rode with talked a lot about how important it is, he doesn't even ask people where they got their drugs, because he sees his job as earning their trust, so they will come to him when they are ready to, to move on and get treatment and come clean. So, how to police without violence is a problem that I haven't seen in Northampton. It seems to me we have an excellent police force already.
Thank you. Our next question will come from the Gazette, and it'll be directed at our Ward 1 candidates. Michael, your turn to go first.
The Charter Review Committee has been talking about making changes to voting. One of them is lowering the voting age to 16 or 17 in municipal elections, and recently, they've also started talking about extending the right to vote to non-citizens. And after they come up with the recommendations, they go to city council, so I want to know what your stance is on those changes, potential changes to voting.
This is, this is a great question. My son Tucker's in the back of the room, smiling at me pretty big right now. He's, the last two years was a member of the Mayor's Youth Commission, and last year they worked pretty hard on the resolution to try to give, reduce the voting age to 16 for municipal elections. So, you know, in our house, I think we believe that, that young people are just as engaged as, as the rest of us. And so, if, if 45% of, of adults are engaged, or 30% of adults are engaged, we'll see the same level of engagement from, from the youth, so I would be in favor of, of that, engaging them further. I think it's, it's really pretty exciting. In terms of, of opening the voting to non-residents, I think that's, that's something that, that could be really interesting to accomplish, because we've asked everyone to be counted in our, in our census, without necessarily having to find out who they are exactly. We want to know exactly how many people are living here. If they're living here, they're paying taxes here, they should have a say in the game.
Thank you. Andrew?
Sure, yeah, so, from my perspective, if someone's 16 years old, they're mature enough to vote, I think that you have a lot of skin in the game in the future already. The prospects that you're inheriting from a global perspective are going to be played out before you graduate from graduate school in some senses. So, yeah, 16-year-olds deserve the right to make decisions on the local scale, and also, it creates a habit of voting, you know, people who, you know, vote when they're 16 will probably vote when they're 18. And I think that's a good pattern to establish with young people. Similar to, so, yeah, I support that. Similar to Michael, I, I do have some concerns about whether or not the, the process of letting people who are not residents of the country register to vote would result in those people inadvertently being revealed to a database that would want to access their identity for terrible purposes. And I think that's the, similar to the debate about what happened with, like, whether ICE could gain access to cameras. I think preserving the rights of vulnerable populations is important. So if they're the ones pushing that, then I would want to be respective to what they want to have happen. But I also want to preserve the rights of minorities.
Great. Thank you. Our next question will come from the audience, it'll be for Ward 5. David will answer first, and Alex second.
If elected, how will you, as a city councillor, help get the senior center problems rectified?
Well, I got an advantage here, I am a senior. Today's actually my 64th birthday. I'm spending it with you. You know, a lot of the, people have to understand how the charter works. All the municipal employees work for the mayor. City councillors are specifically prohibited in the charter from giving orders to any city employee. So we have no direct control over anybody that works for the city, including the director of the senior center or of any of the staff there. So really, we need to lobby the mayor, and the seniors need to lobby the mayor, because they, all the staff works for the mayor. And as I said, we are specifically excluded from telling them what to do under the charter. We have always supported it, and its budget, and its revolving funds at the city council, but we really, we're really not in a position to do that, and it's important to understand what our role is under the charter, and what we actually can do and accomplish on our own, without lobbying the mayor.
Yeah, so Dave, you know, David's absolutely right, there are limitations on city, on city council power. You know, we get to pass ordinances, we get to make appointments, so if there was another senior center, you know, if, if there was a new senior center manager, then we would get to approve that appointment. And then, we get, you know, to approve the budget, or reduce it. But I also see my role as one of being a communications hub, so kind of, for those 4,000 people that if I'm elected, I'll represent, they get to tell me what is going on, and how, and you know, what can be done about it, and then I can convey that to the mayor, to the different departments. You know, I can't tell them what to do, but we can make sure everyone's informed, and, and try to find a really good solution.
Thank you. Our next question will be from the audience, and Penny, you'll be fielding it first, and then Rachel.
Nearly 200,000 people en masse lack health insurance, and many more cannot afford care due to high out-of-pocket costs. Rising costs are straining household, municipal, and school districts, district budgets in Northampton. Last year, 80%, 87% of Northampton voters approved a single payer ballot question. Our state rep and senator are both champions of Medicare for All. What will you do to support the single payer campaign en masse, and to address the growing crisis of healthcare access and cost?
This is not an issue that the city council has authority over. I did, in my work experience, establish a health insurance program that insured public employees across Western Massachusetts, so I have some interest in insurance. I did work for Berwick for governor, because I believe in, in healthcare for all, but I don't see this as something that the city council has a lot of authority to change.
Thank you. Rachel?
Yeah, so I, I guess I see the city, you know, as, as part of a larger community, and as part of the state, and often, Western Mass's voice and our opinions aren't really registering. So I think my strong history as an advocate, and my strong relationships with our legislators who are doing excellent work, will help advocate at, at the state level. I mean, the city council has their formal powers here, but the city councillors have the power and the right to advocate at the state level for our residents, and I would certainly be advocating for Medicare for All.
Thank you. So, this is where I decide if we're gonna, I'm gonna ask our friends at Community Television if we have a strict cutoff. So, we started late, I want to make sure that we have time for the candidates to answer sufficient questions. So, so we're gonna do one more round of, of questions for our candidates, and then we'll bring things to a close. So, so let's bring another question from the audience for Ward 1, and Andrew, it's your turn to answer first. That would be Eugene.
I'm reading the next question. Who's this going to? I'm sorry.
This is going to, to Ward 1.
Okay. The mayor has stated, a proposition two and a half will be placed on the ballot in March 2020. Where do you stand on this?
So, I have a terrible confession to make. Today is also my 64th birthday, so I just want to get that on the record. So, so, yeah, so I think, here's, here's my position on two and a half override. The, the issue is that, when you look at the cost of operating a city government, when you look at the cost of inflation, increasing cost of health insurance, those go up at a rate that's faster than 2 and 1/2% on an annual basis sometimes, and I feel like what we're locked into is this artificial threshold. And I know, like, for people who are living, you know, on fixed incomes, it really hurts, and it's really painful to have money taken out of their pocket. But I think I want to broaden this to a different discussion. When you think about, I think the number one things that cities and towns could do or have happen to them in order to, like, spur investment in infrastructure, all the things that people care about, is to have us get out of the health insurance business, and have us, and I think if there were, like, this, this is where the federal and state stuff has to happen first, but if there was a way to buy out our health insurance responsibilities, and buy out our retirement obligations, then that massive portion of the budget is going to be eliminated. So I think we need to think big, and we need to make bold statements.
Thank you. So, how about a question from the Gazette?
Ingrid, I didn't, I didn't.
Whoops. I'm so sorry. Thank you for keeping me on my job. Michael, your turn.
Thank you. The, the two and a half is, is, you know, the school committee members before this got the same question, and it's really, it is such a sensitive topic, because it affects every household individually, right? So, in our household, we would vote for a two and a half override, because we would believe in supporting the city as best we could. And, you know, one of the things that I would hope to do on the city council is, through the budgeting process, through the understanding of what's happening here in Northampton, have the opportunity to dig into the budget further, and make sure that the money's being spent the best way it can for the citizens of, of Northampton. I'm a return on investment person, that's what I believe in. If you live here in Northampton, own a business here in Northampton, you're investing in this city. We should be doing everything we can to get people into your restaurants, to get people, you know, the services they need in their homes, to get our children educated as best we can. And, and I believe that, that we need to do that, you know, whether it's passing an override, or whether it's, you know, doing everything we can, marketing-wise, to get Northampton known. That's important to me. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, we'll take a question from the Gazette for our Ward 5 candidates, and Alex, it's your turn to answer first.
What do you think the city council can do to make Northampton a more accessible place for residents and visitors with disabilities?
Well, we recently did a sidewalk inventory of everywhere, all the sidewalks of the city. And I am a strong supporter of making our sidewalks more accessible, and also considering, one of the projects I started working on before even thinking of running for city council was thinking about the condition of them in the winter. There was a Gazette article last winter about a man in a wheelchair who had tremendous trouble in getting places, and that is, so that, we should consider an option like Amherst has, which is sort of a hybrid option, where the city, or the town of Amherst plows a, a sidewalk plowing route, and then residents are required after that point. But, you know, continuing the work of also asking people with disabilities for input, and for priority.
Thank you. David?
And I'm, I'm gonna highlight sidewalks, too, because we do have this new inventory, we do know the worst ones, and they've been prioritized. The ones that access schools are on the top of the list, of course. But it's a personal thing for me, I have a neighbor who's in his 80s that has mobility issues, and he is a walker, and his health aide takes him out walking. But he walks on Route 9, in the bike lane, because he can't traverse the sidewalk with his walker, because it's too uneven for him to do that. Yet, in capital improvements, we've only budgeted $50,000 for sidewalks, way too little. And we keep building new ones, not fixing the old ones, and the old ones are the ones that are in the walkable parts of the inner that are in the walkable parts of the inner part of the city. I'm kind of at a loss, because for the entire time I've been a councillor, I've been asking for more money for sidewalks, and it just hasn't happened yet. But we need to focus on that, because we're becoming more pedestrian, we're doing more infill to sidewalks, are becoming more important, and we're just not fixing them, because they're not in the budget.
Thank you. Do you have one more question from the audience for Ward seven, and Rachel, you'll be answering first?
What can be done to have pilot programs make a more substantial contribution to the city budget?
Right, yeah. So I know, I know that the mayor has been working hard on that, especially around Smith. And, you know, pay in lieu of taxes is a tough thing, self, because it is voluntary. And so I think it's a lot about approaching Smith and other entities that don't pay taxes with kind of promoting what Northampton does for them, and a lot of transparency around what's going on around that would actually be helpful, because I think, one-on-one, we could be promoting it with these organizations. It's symbiotic, we get a lot from Smith and other organizations, but they get a lot from us, too. So I think a good sales tactic is to keep on coming back and be a broken record.
Thank you.
So to repeat what Rachel said, it is not within the city's power to force any of our not-for-profits to pay pilots. The mayor has been working really hard on this. Instead, there are things we can do to increase revenue, and we should be doing those. One of those is to vote for a two and a half override. Another is to support our representatives as they work for new funding formulas for schools. Another is to vote, when it comes up, for the Millionaires Fair Share Tax. We need to be doing things to increase our revenue that are within our power, instead of spending time on things we really don't have control over.
Thank you. So we've come to that part in the evening where we're gonna give you the opportunity to answer a question that you did not have a chance to previously, and we're gonna kind of continue just taking turns. So I'm gonna start with our Ward one candidates, and Michael, it's your turn to go first. So what question did you not have a chance to answer that you would like to spend a minute talking about?
The senior centre. This is, seniors answer the door when you knock, seniors pick up the phone and call. I've had, I've had a number of conversations about the senior centre, and, you know, most of the seniors that I've spoken to do have a level of dissatisfaction with the services they're receiving there. These are people that have paid taxes to the city for a long time. They deserve a voice, they deserve a return on that investment that gives them the opportunity to feel good about being a Northampton resident. And, you know, for me, one of the things, with all due respect, the city council does have the right to ask questions of department heads. I wouldn't expect the, you know, the senior centre director to write a letter to the editor in response to every letter to the editor. What I would expect is, when there are issues, when there are concerns, that those questions can be answered. You know, I think the seniors deserve a voice, the Gazette is providing a voice at some level, but there are answers out there that need to be given, and so that's something that I would pledge.
Thank you. Andrew, what question would you like to address that you did not have a chance to?
Okay, so I think I do want to talk about the issue of people who don't have homes, because I feel like one of the main drivers of that, just in like a meta way, is the fact that there's, most of our land use ordinances in America are geared towards, like, incentivizing one particular type of development, single-family housing. And that's true, that's just mostly, most land areas are allocated to single-family housing. So what we need to do is we locate areas that are exclusively single-family housing and upzone those to, from single-family to two-family. And what we need to do is we need to flip it on its head and prevent single-family housing from being constructed. People might not like to hear that, but what that does, it creates a real reason for building density. And that, you know, that supply and demand, people believe in that, you know, like it's tenet of the gospels here in America. And I think that increases the supply and reduces the costs. That's one of the techniques that we can pursue. Another is just having compassion and recognizing that not everybody fits into one particular kind of box for how to live their lives, and letting people find their own way, in a compassionate way.
Thank you. All right, so let's listen to our Ward five candidates. David, it's your turn to go first. So what question would you like to answer?
Oh, I'm gonna take the override question, because I'm kind of a finance guy. The last general override we had was in 2014, and I think this mayor has done a really good job stretching that money as far as he can. Now, we had some help, because the economy was expanding for the last several years, we had a lot of new growth, so our revenue base grew. But we've all just signed new contracts with all of our major labor unions. So we know we've got step raises coming. We're in 2020 now, we've got enough reserves to get through 2021, but after that, it's going to be very, very difficult. So I can tell you that the override will be necessary to maintain the status quo, but I also understand that there are people out there, particularly seniors, that are of limited income. So what I'd like to remind you is this is your opportunity to tell us how you want us to run the city. You don't always get a chance to do that. If you want to maintain the status quo with no change, you should vote for the override. If you can't afford to do so, it's okay to say no, because you can't afford to do so. But you need to tell us how you want us to run the city going forward, and you get to do that with a vote.
Thank you. Alex, what question would you like to answer?
I just want to touch briefly on the override, on the issue of advocating on a state level for a more progressive tax system, and for the ability for us to give more abatements or exemptions for seniors or for low-income people, including potentially a pass-through for renters. And so that's, you know, we're very limited by the state and how we can raise taxes, but I would like us to advocate for that, to those changes. Also, talk about affordability, to give people more housing choices, for example, making it easier for accessory dwelling units or in-law apartments to be built. But also, we need to do infill right. You know, I've talked with people, especially in the Bay State neighborhood, where we see some situations where there are negative impacts from the more dense development, and so we need to think about that in terms of stormwater runoff and such.
Thank you. All right, Ward seven, it's your turn, and Penny, you get to go first. What do you want to address?
Okay, two things. Please pick up one of these brochures on the table about fiber optic to your home, and watch for a survey to come from the city soon. We will only do it if people will use it. That's something we can do without new taxes, it will be supported by user fees, and it makes sense to know whether it makes sense. So please, pick one up, inform yourself, and watch for that survey when it comes. And the other thing I want to talk about is homes that are affordable in good neighborhoods. My daughter lives in, one of my daughters lives in Berkeley, California, where they, zoning allows a tiny home in a backyard. And that, it's a good neighborhood, it's well-maintained, because it belongs to someone who cares about it, and it's good for seniors to want to live near their children. If you have a child who's grown up and isn't quite ready to leave, but you can't quite live in the house, you can have it there, or you can rent it out for more income.
Thank you. Rachel, what question would you like to address?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple points about our carbon neutral goal, which I'm just really heartened by. And, but I do think, you know, as, with my public health background, I know when we make plans, you really need to have those metrics, and you need to have it broken down in a way that you can reach certain goals and keep climbing. So I'd like to see the master plan eventually have metrics, and I would like the goal to be more like 20, 35, maybe 35 and 35, or something like that, because I think that will keep us on course. And I just, just like Penny gave a shout-out to municipally-owned high-speed internet, which I'm totally jazzed about, I want to give a shout-out to Community Choice Clean Energy 3.0, because I actually think it's something that can really help us practically with our carbon-neutral goal. It's cooled, clean energy, it's affordable, it keeps our revenue regionally circulating, and it's on study now, and, yep, it'll be in our near future. So I hope that you'll consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. So I would like to thank all the people who made tonight possible, the Daily Hampshire Gazette, the League of Women Voters of the Northampton area, Northampton Community Television, all of our candidates who deserve a really big round of applause.
Thank you. And everyone who came.
Yes. Thank you to all the people who volunteered their time, and thank especially to all of you who came out to become more informed voters. So see you at the polls. Thank you.